Good evening, everybody. We will call the meeting, give order, by standing for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, once again, good evening and welcome to the June 1st work session of the North Hill School District. We are now going to start out with public recognition and I'm going to ask Mrs. Heather Kobe, a high school science teacher who presents the following students in the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Regional and State Competitions. Mrs. Kobe.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I would like to thank a few people who, without their assistance, this program would not be possible. I cannot do this alone. It takes an army to help these students with their projects. And I'd first like to thank Laura Clark, who is a senior high teacher, for helping Lindsay with her project. She was very instrumental in getting her, all of her equipment and guiding her through her experiment. I would also like to thank Dr. John Stoltz from Duquesne University, who has been a lifelong friend of mine and professor and colleague. He helped Lauren and Hannah and extended his lab to them so that they could do their research. I would also like to thank Rebecca Waters from the University of Pittsburgh, who allowed Maria to go into her cancer research lab to complete her experiments. And I would also like to thank Mr. Arlia and Dr. Katanzaro, who took time out of their busy schedule to help chaperone the state competition. Without them, I could not have gotten through that state competition. This year, I was actually the technician coordinator for the entire state and without their assistance, I could not, I could not have gotten through it. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Julia, Arlia, and Allison Lucas, who are not here this evening, they were my right-hand girls, who helped me with all of my technician problems and were absolutely incredible. And for the North Hill School District, without the school board and administrators, the PGS program would not exist. And I'd like to thank you for your endless support of my students and for the PGAIS program. So, at this time, I would like to present the students who are participants in PGAIS. I'm going to start with eighth grade, so I'm going to ask Hannah Shulley to come up. Hannah Shulley was my only eighth grader this year, and she conducted an experiment on phone soap. Does it sanitize your phone? She earned a first at Regions and a second at States. My 10th graders, I have three 10th graders, unfortunately, two of them could not be with us this evening. Allison Lucas completed the rivalry between penicillin and holistic remedies. She earned a second at Regions and then she came to States and helped with technicians. Caitlin Immler, who is also not here this evening, she completed the effects of microwave radiation on E. coli K-12. She earned a second at Regions. And then I'd like to present Lindsay Edmundston, who earned a first at Regions and a first at States for her experiment on the bioremediation of different aquatic plants. Finally, I'd like to present our 11th graders who participated this year. First, we have Hannah Kunzac, who completed the experiment of trichlorostan's effects on bacterial resistance. She earned a second place at Regions. And I'd like to present Lauren Rebel, who completed the experiment microbial bioremediation of toxic pollution. She earned a first place at Regions and a first place at States. She is also the recipient of the five-year state perseverance award, the Penn State Everly College of Science Scholarship for $2,000 annually for the Penn State University Everly College of Science Program. And she also received the Penn State University College of Agricultural Science Scholarship, $2,000 annually for the Penn State University College of Agriculture. And finally, I'd like to present Maria Arlia, who completed the experiment metastacity of Lio Mirosarcoma. She earned a first place at Regions, a first place at States, a perfect score at States. She earned the five-year state perseverance award and also the Penn State Everly College of Science Scholarship for $2,000 annually for Penn State University Everly College of Science. And I'd also like Julia to come on up for all of her assistance. She has been a wonderful asset to the PGAIS program, and I'm hoping she does a project next year. I'm working on her. Thank you.
Mr. Willis?
Yes, ma'am.
I just asked our wonderful science teacher whether or not she could make a list of what they did. I mean, I don't even know some of those words. I am really, really impressed, so congratulations, everybody.
I agree. Thank you. We're going to ask Dr. Johanna Venata now to present the following students who have achieved rank of Eagle Scout.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to honor two outstanding North Hill School seniors this evening for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Michael Miller and Daniel Redminsky, both are Scouts from Troop 368. To achieve Eagle Scout rank, Michael and Daniel both earned a total of 25 merit badges, which demonstrate proficiency in outdoor skills, personal management, communications, citizenship, personal fitness, and more. Mike and Dan also served in troop leadership positions such as Senior Patrol Leader and Patrol Leader. For this Eagle Scout project, Mike built and maintained a community garden in Ross with the help of family fellow scouts from Troop 368 and Friends. The garden took 245 hours to complete and maintain and provides fresh produce for North Hill's Community Food Bank. Dan's Eagle Scout project entailed remodeling two bathrooms and a hallway at St. Anthony's Church in Westview. Mouthful, sorry. As part of that project, he dropped the ceiling, helped box in windows, redid a hallway. Dan also replaced four floor tiles with new vinyl flooring and repainted walls and frames of windows. Twenty-one workers helped with this project, which took 474 hours to complete. Michael will be attending the University of Pittsburgh Bradford this fall to focus on his STEM career, and Daniel will be attending Slippery Rock University where he will major in computer science. Please join me in congratulating Michael and Dan in their honors.
Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations, Dan. Congratulations, Mike. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Michael, I still can't believe you're graduating.
I can't either.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Great job, thank you. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Okay, now, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Patrick Manarino, who has a chance to present some service awards to a couple of school board members.
One of the nice things that this district does is recognizes the years of service for its employees and board members in increments of five years, but it begins with the 10-year pin. The pin is a beautiful Indian, and then as each of those five years occur in your career, a different jewel is added. So, the 10-year pin is an Indian with a red ruby in its headdress, and this is being awarded tonight to Mr. Lou Nudi, who has served this school board for 10 years. Mr. Nudi? And I believe this is the fan favorite because it has two diamonds and a ruby, which makes it white and red, and this is the 30-year pin. And after 30 years of service to the North Hill School Board, Mrs. Bender receives her 30-year charm.
Okay, I have my own service awards to present to the following administrators. First, we have Dr. Johanna Venata, who has now completed 10 years of service with the North Hill School District. So, Dr. Venata, if you'd be kind enough to come up and get your 10-year pin. And last, but certainly not least, I have a 15-year service award with the North Hill School District for Dr. Manarino, who's now our superintendent, of course, and has served now for 15 years. Congratulations, Dr. Manarino.
Thank you. That was important, Mark.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Thank you, that's great. I think that completes all of our public recognition. We can move on to board member comments, if there are any this evening.
Okay, I'll start. I just wanted to congratulate all the seniors who graduated Friday, and also Friday, I got to attend the eighth-grade awards presentation. My son's an eighth grader, so moving on to the high school. And I'd like to thank everybody there. Geez, the band played, the orchestra played, the chorus sang, they all did a great job. I didn't realize we had so many people in the choir in middle school. It was a huge group, and they all did well. I'd also like to congratulate Amber Lee Valeriano, who finished seventh at the state meet in the hurdles. And I'd also like to congratulate the Future Business Leaders of America Conference in their competition. We had Dan O'Toole, John Venata, and Adam Aguilar all placed in competition, so congratulations to everybody. And, you know, all the students, too.
Absolutely.
They're all moving on to, you know, it's not just the graduating seniors that are moving on from kindergarten on up. Good luck next year.
New year, absolutely. Thank you. Do we have anybody? Mrs. Reed.
I'd like to thank the chorus department for the seventh, eighth-grade concert I came to last week. They were absolutely wonderful, and the teacher did various things with them, whistling, hand-clapping. It was very, very nice. And also, to Westview Elementary for their fourth-grade play, "Dig It!", it was called. My grandson was a soldier in it. And it was real cute, and I commend them because I believe they're the only school now that still has fourth-grade plays.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So, thank you. And of course, you know, the staff down there is wonderful.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Of course, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Muha said, congratulating all of our seniors. But I would also like to thank our administration and also all of the people who were involved. Number one, in the graduation on Friday, it was beautiful. Thank God the weatherman was correct, and Dr. Manarino believed him totally. Also, North Hill's held the A.W. Beatty's Senior Recognition Day, which is their graduation from our Career Center. And again, it was great. Everyone here was just wonderful, and that's all that we heard from the staff, from Beatty. I think we are very fortunate. We have no idea the amount of time and effort it takes people to prepare for these events. Wonderful. And I also want to say thank you for my recognition. I have had 30 years of service to the North Hill School District. I didn't graduate from North Hill's. I grew up in Elizabeth, New Jersey, if anyone knows where that is. But I have been a part of North Hill's. It is a part of me, and it will always be a part of me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wear that pin with pride. You're the only one out. Does anybody else?
Part of me.
And nobody else had a 30-year? I don't believe so.
No, I actually outlasted Alice Harvey.
Did you really?
Yes, I think she was, I think she was 28.
You're right, that's true. Good for you. Congratulations once again, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, we could now move on to public comments on agenda items only. I believe we might have someone who wants to address the board this evening? Has anybody signed up to address? Okay. If you wouldn't mind, sir, go up to the podium. If you, probably up to the podium, so we can put you on camera and hold you responsible. Before you do that, when you get there, I'm going to have Mr. Yeoman read our policy on public speaking, and then after that, if you state your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Okay.
We would like to invite any resident, taxpayer, or employee of the North Hill School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation, inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas as well as inform us of many concerns in the district. The board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speakers and/or issues in the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting. Personal items must be submitted in writing to the board president for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can immediately and quickly be addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting.
Name your address.
My name's Peter Schmidt. Address is 209 Ninth Street, 5th Floor, Pittsburgh, PA 15222.
How many square feet do you have over there?
What's that?
How many square feet do you have over there? We need that for the record.
I don't know.
Just kidding. Go ahead.
Just on, I, once again, my name is Pete Schmidt. I am the union rep from SEIU 32BJ, and on behalf of our food service bargaining committee and the rest of the members who unanimously ratified their contract last week, I want to give you a sincere thank you to the board and to the administration, especially Mr. Nudi, Mrs. Mengene, and Mr. Hall for bargaining in good faith, which is something that actually does not happen too often these days when we do labor, any kind of labor contracts. So, just on behalf of the 30-plus folks who work in the food service and our dedicated workers, we truly appreciate this district bargaining in good faith and, you know, making it relatively easy going this time around.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
We know how negotiations can sometimes, you know, obviously, we start out here and we kind of, but at the same time...
We definitely started out there.
Yeah, and in this environment, using public bunnies, everybody has to, you know...
I fully get that.
And you folks, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Really, thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you saying that.
This is probably the first time and maybe the last time I ever thank a school board for anything. But honestly, thank you so much.
Thank you, Pete.
Hey, my mother was a graduate from North Hill's in 1964.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate your thoughts. Thank you so much. Thank you. Please, Dr. Mengene, make a comment?
I'd like to make a comment that I think this man, Gene, and Dave Hall would agree that they definitely bargained in good faith also. That made it go a lot easier than I had imagined it was going to be.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Thank you again. Okay, we can now move on to the superintendent's report, points of pride.
Before I get to that, I want to say thank you. I received my 15-year pin tonight, and so I'd like to thank this board for having the faith in me, allowing me to lead this great district, and the privilege of serving as the superintendent. Fifteen years ago, Arlene Bender thought I was a high school student in the parking lot the night that I was hired to be an assistant principal, and you've allowed me to be the assistant principal, the high school principal, and assistant superintendent, and now superintendent. So, for that, I'm truly grateful to this district, and I just wanted to say thank you tonight as we kind of end the school year. Yes, we meet again next week. However, I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe summer. We will be back here in August very quickly, but with that being said, it was a fantastic school year. It's already been said about commencement, it was a gorgeous night. It was a great class to celebrate, which you're going to hear some things about them in here. Wonderful group of students, fantastic dedicated teachers and administrators and our employees that, you know, from any aspect of what this district does, it was just a fantastic year across the board. You know, we cannot do this without our custodians, without our secretaries, without our food service workers. So, from the bottom of my heart, as the superintendent, I want to thank every single one of you and wish each of you a happy, healthy summer.
And I'm sorry, this reminded me of something real quick. I do want to really thank our custodial staff for what they did at the stadium and the maintenance, too. I mean, it rained most of the day, and that stadium was ready, like, that was no small feat. So, on behalf of everybody here, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanted to say thanks.
It's all right, that's part of pride, tradition, and excellence.
Thanks to the custodians and the maintenance people. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. This one was really awesome. I had an opportunity to go over and see this event live in action, but what we had was the High Cliff Elementary students in Kristen Carmody's class are some of the newest members of the Boy Scouts of America. The chapter of Laurel Highlands Council for the first time in North Hill School District, where five of our students have their very own troop as part of a Trailblazer outreach. As part of this program, scout leaders will visit our students two times a month and deliver the traditional scouting program in the High Cliff Elementary classroom, and our students participated in their very own Pinewood Derby this month. It was just a very fun event. Our Remake Learning Days occurred this month, and as part of the Regions Remake Learning Days, 40 eighth graders participated in Stairway to Stemmon, which is during the special event they utilize their STEM skills like computer programming and coding robots, and flying drones, and 3D design, and printing to print their very own Stanley Cup, which hopefully we get a real one here in a couple of games also, in addition to the life skills and teamwork and communication that were provided in order to do the Remake Learning Days at our middle school. These girls were just recognized by the board, but with our PA Junior Academy of Science. But we had four girls that achieved high levels, second-place honors in this year's PA Junior Academy of Science. But the one that sticks out is Maria Alaria, who knocked a perfect score on her biochemistry experiment, along with a $2,000 annual scholarship to Penn State's Everly College of Science, which is just amazing. We also had a junior, Lauren Rebel, who was awarded $4,000 in annual scholarships to the same program as Penn State's College of Agriculture for her microbiology experiment. So, a lot of very, very highly accomplished females in science that we had an opportunity to recognize tonight. We had a camping day at High Cliff, where High Cliff Elementary first graders roughed it during a camping day. They had tie-dyed t-shirts, they were reading books in tents, and eating smores by the fire, as well as camping-inspired learning activities. We're all a part of that special event at High Cliff Elementary. Again, pretty awesome news that we have a Norberg Scholarship winner again this year. We had one last year as well, but Ruby Burnett was selected for the prestigious Norberg Leadership Scholarship Program for the University of Pittsburgh. She is one of only 10 students selected for the program from across Pennsylvania. Again, this is the second year in a row that North Hill's has a Norberg Scholarship winner. As part of this program, she will receive full tuition estimated at about $110,000, three years of paid internships, a study abroad experience, and a myriad of networking, career coaching, and leadership activities. She plans to major in political science. We had an academic signing day, much like we had with the athletic signing day, so what we did for the class of 2017 is they participated in an academic signing day, and our graduates who are headed off all around the country to continue their educations at a credible institutions, signed their letters of intent to those, our nation's universities and our militaries to begin starting their amazing careers. At High Cliff Elementary, our second-grade classrooms were transformed into underwater paradises as part of their annual habitat projects. Each student created a large-scale marine creature and accompanied their display with an informational booklet that included a table of contents and a description of their creature in a colorful, realistic drawing as we transformed that classroom into an underwater habitat. We had muffins for mom at McIntyre Elementary this year, where our kindergarten students in Alyssa Sermoneras and Ashley Myers' classes celebrated their moms during a muffins-for-moms day event over Mother's Day. We had two students who represented the National Chemistry Olympiad finalists, and these two students competed with 127 students from 21 local schools for prizes, scholarships, and the opportunity to compete for a national Olympiad. So, they were two of eight finalists that were selected from the state of Pennsylvania. We had our concept car design, which was part of the Arts Alive this year, where Junior Stephen Miller won the second annual MAKO Concept Car Competition at Arts Alive, and his design is currently on display at MAKO's on Rochester Road. The Wax Museum of Historical Figures took place again at Ross Elementary, where our third graders became famous figures throughout history as they transformed the school's hallways and classrooms into a wax museum. Our middle school seventh graders and teachers participated in the Grade Career Day. Professionals with a wide variety of occupations visited the middle school to talk about their jobs, their daily responsibilities, and what training or education is required in order to do that job. We had an NHGA Academic Excellence Awards Night, where students in sixth, eighth, and 12th grade were recognized for their scholarship, citizenship, school spirit, and annual North Hill's Academic Excellence Awards Night, which was presented by the North Hill's Education Association. Our gifted fourth graders took part in their second annual Science Olympiad that consisted of a series of fast-paced and academic team events. Activities included using an electric snap circuit to complete electrical systems projects, building, testing, and modifying a catapult to launch items to a target, creating a marble run that would keep the marble going on a track for the longest, and identifying insect friends and foes, which I stayed away from the insect friends. Financial Literacy Day occurred, where our seventh graders participated in the district's annual Financial Literacy Day, which was supported by Northwest Savings Bank with the help of 18 high school students. We had the Musics in the Park Festival, where our North Hill's bands and choirs were ranked superior or excellent at Music in the Parks Festival at Cedar Point. Additional honors were given to the best overall band was our Wind Ensemble, the best overall orchestra was our Chamber Strings, the best overall jazz was our Jazz Band, and the best overall jazz soloist was Dylan Clark. The Gene Kelly Awards were just recently announced, and in the class of 2007 graduate, Will Huffmeyer, was nominated for Best Actor, and our musical was nominated for Best All Student Orchestra in the 27th Annual Gene Kelly Awards for Excellence in the High School Musical Theater. These nominations came from our presentation of me and my girl. With our PIAA and WPL playoffs all happening in the month of May, we are happy to announce that Amber Lee Valeriano placed second in long jump and fourth in hurdles at the WPIAL Championship, which qualified her to compete in both events at the PIAA Track and Field Championships at Shippensburg. I believe she finished sixth in the state?
Seventh in hurdles.
Seventh in the hurdles in the state, right. I knew she was on the podium with a medal. Our baseball team was the section champ this year, and we had a bye in the first round of the playoffs, but unfortunately fell short to Chartiers Valley in that second round of the WPIAL playoffs. Our softball team advanced to the second round of the WPL playoffs after beating Bethel Park. We lost to the top-ranked in the state, Hempfield. At one point, we were leading, and that was the first time Hempfield was at a deficit all season with our 2-0 lead, but we ended up losing that game 3-2 to the number-one team. This was really awesome, and I know some of our board members attended this event, but we had a college-bound student-athlete reception, where 30 of North Hill's student-athletes will continue their academic and athletic careers at the collegiate level. We honored their achievements at an inaugural college-bound student-athlete recognition reception, where these athletes, we heard from the athletes, and Amy Schuneman, who's our athletic director, where they talked about what they're going to study, where they're going to attend, and what sports they're going to play in college. We had a keynote speaker, which I thought was a really nice idea, and that keynote speaker was Noah Bostick. Noah was a 2014 graduate and is a four-sport North Hill's athlete. He is a track athlete at Slippery Rock. Ross Elementary students set a building record by raising $17,759 this year to charitable givings. We had the Distinguished Alumni Event in the month of May, and the Academy of Medicine students had the opportunity to hear from our distinguished alum in class of 1977 valedictorian, Dr. Jerry Yee, about pursuing a career in medicine. He also shared personal reflections regarding specific paths in medicine and offered advice for our students in any of their areas of medicine of interest. We also had an opportunity for our senior Monica Snyder, who was honored as one of the first Allegheny County Human Relations Commission Diversity Award winners. She received her award from Allegheny County Council Chief Rich Fitzgerald and members of the Allegheny County Council during a special ceremony. And if you look close, former board member Tom Baker is in that picture. Class of 2017 graduate Monica Snyder is also pursuing a Global Leadership Certificate designed and developed by the World of Affairs Council of Pittsburgh. We also held our mock crash at the high school, and seniors took part in this mock crash and the Every 15 Minutes program to demonstrate the dangerous consequences of drinking while driving in advance of the class of 2017's prom. The United States Air Force Thunderbirds stopped by the high school to speak with our students about the United States Air Force fighter jets and the importance of education. Our graduation event was held last Friday, where we graduated 384 students from the class of 2017, and this class earned a record $4.2 million in scholarships. We had 150 students who graduated with a QPA of 3.5 or higher. Eighty-six percent of our students will continue their education at a college, a four-year or a two-year institution. Eleven of our students have chosen to enlist into one of our armed services. And that is our pride, tradition, and excellence for the month of May.
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. We can now move on to education. Mrs. Bender?
We had the Distinguished Alumni Event in the month of May, and the Academy of Medicine students had the opportunity to hear from our distinguished alum in class of nineteen seventy-seven valedictorian, Dr. Jerry Yee, about pursuing a career in medicine. He also shared personal reflections regarding specific paths in medicine and offered advice for our students in any of their areas of medicine of interest. We also had an opportunity for our senior Monica Snyder, who was honored as one of the first Allegheny County Human Relations Commission Diversity Award winners. She received her award from Allegheny County Council Chief Rich Fitzgerald and members of the Allegheny County Council during a special ceremony. And if you look close, former board member Tom Baker is in that picture. Class of two thousand and seventeen graduate Monica Snyder is also pursuing a Global Leadership Certificate designed to develop, designed and developed by the World of Affairs Council of Pittsburgh. We also held our mock crash at the high school, and seniors took part in this mock crash and the Every Fifteen Minutes Program to demonstrate the dangerous consequences of drinking while driving in advance of the class of two thousand seventeen's prom. The United States Air Force Thunderbirds stopped by the high school to speak with our students about the United States Air Force fighter jets and the importance of education. Our graduation event was held last Friday, where we graduated three hundred and eighty-four students from the class of two thousand and seventeen. And this class earned a record, four point two million dollars in scholarships. We had one hundred and fifty students who graduated with a QPA of three point five or higher. Eighty-six percent of our students will continue their education at a college, a four-year or a two-year institution. Eleven of our students have chosen to enlist into one of our armed services. And that is our pride, tradition, and excellence for the month of May.
Thank you, Dr. Manarino. We can now move on to education. Mrs. Bender?
Getting it.
Okay, take your time.
It doesn't like me. Here, do you want my, here, read this one? Yeah, I'm going to read, Mrs. Reed's.
That's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, on the education committee, number one, we have the adoption of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen textbooks. Are there any questions concerning any of these textbooks? Number two, the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen K through six Student Parent Handbook. Are there any questions in regards to that? Number three, BIGS in Blue Program. Any questions in regards to that program? Number four, the Delphi Education Services and North Hills School District, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen agreement. Number five, the Bid Award for Physical Education Equipment and Accessories. Does any, one have any questions in regards to that? There being no questions, I would like to make a motion to add the education items one through five to the legislating, legislative meeting agenda.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. We could now move on to athletics and activities. Mr. Muha?
We only have one item tonight, that's the Parents/Student Athletic Handbook for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen from North Hills High School and North Hills Middle School, which is attached. Are there any questions on this item?
There's no questions, but I called up the athletic office today in regard to, on page three, paragraph three, it refers to us as North Hills Park School District. So I thought she, for a moment, she thought she was back at Bethel Park.
Good catch.
So they're, they're removing that. You know, it'll just say North Hills School District.
Good catch. Good catch. Thank you. Um.
Good job.
Okay, and I move that item one, under Athletics and Activities, be added to the legislative meeting agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Muha. A W Beatty, it appears we have nothing under there. Mrs. Bender, Mr. Nudie, do you have anything that might be for the good of the cause?
No, no comment.
Okay, no comment.
And I made my.
Right, for the graduation.
Speech before.
Thank you. Okay, we can now move on to personnel. That would be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. August. Personal items are discussed in executive session, and therefore I move that items one through nine, under Personnel, be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Policy, Mrs. Reed, it appears we have nothing under there unless you have something that we didn't list. Is there anything you need to discuss there or mention before we move on?
No, but I just have one question there under per, when we just did Personnel, were we appointed school board secretary? Should we have said Lori's name, Lori Rigger, in the minutes?
We, 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 well.
At the voting meeting.
At the voting, yeah, yeah, because.
I always get confused.
Exactly. Some of us might want to withhold that vote, so we have to make sure.
I just wanted to see you were recognized.
Just to see if she's paying attention.
Right, and not anyone else was coming, right? Yeah.
That's right. This is true. Thank you. So nothing under policy?
Nope.
Community and Intergovernmental Relations, Mr. Yeoman, do we have anything that is worthwhile mentioning at this point? Or we don't have anything on the agenda?
Nothing on the agenda, and I don't have any, anything else to add.
Great, thank you. We can now move on to Finance. Dr. Nolish?
Okay, thank you. We actually have fourteen items to add to the agenda, plus a few informational items. First with the agenda items. The first is a resolution establishing the tax rate at eighteen point oh mils. This was the resolution that was presented with the draft budget. Second is the resolution for the Homestead, to approve the Homestead/Farmstead exclusion, which we do every year. The third is the twenty seven eighteen final budget. And again, this is the budget that was presented in the draft budget form. And am I correct, Mr. Hall, that there's been no significant changes to the budget?
The only change was a very slight change because the state issued the Homestead exemption amount. And it was about thirty or forty dollars different than what I had estimated.
Higher or lower?
So I had to change the real estate tax by that amount, change the Homestead exemption amount.
Did they increase or lower it?
I actually believe it went up.
Thank you.
Okay. Fourth is general fund bills. Fifth is construction fund bills. Sixth, capital project fund bills. Seven, budget transfers. Eight is payroll for the month of May. Nine is our general insurance approval that we renew each year. Ten is workers' compensation insurance renewals, again, annual. Eleven is the annual appointment of the auditors. Twelve is the renewal of the Questec contract for, which is our computer services. Copier maintenance contract is thirteen. And fourteen is facilities use fee schedule, which keeps the rates for the facilities used the same as they have been in prior years. Are there any questions regarding any of the finance items for the agenda?
Mr. Yeoman?
Any, any further clarity on any of our state revenue sources for this year that you can update us on? Or is it status quo as far as that's concerned? There's still a lot of questions to be answered.
There's still questions to be answered. It has been a quiet year at the budget, state budget level. I'm not hearing a whole lot from the state. So I have no idea whether they're on track to pass the budget or not on track to pass the budget.
Right, and there's several items in there that are potentially a worry to us related to transportation, related to the plan con reimbursements, in addition to the, you know, whatever, with the, just the general, our main appropriation and our special education appropriation.
Correct.
So a good, a good portion of our revenue at this point is still a shot in the dark.
Again, the amount of change in it is, I doubt seriously there'd be any dramatic decreases. They haven't given a very good, very good hint as to which direction they're going to be moving.
Is there any one thing that's keeping you up at night from, from the state perspective that if things don't break our way, what we would have to make, we have to have some, some contingencies in place?
Well, my big question is how are they going to fund the plan con subsidy? As proposed by the governor's budget, there's nowhere near enough money to fund the plan con subsidy. So are they going to issue debt again through that? It's the only thing I can see that could possibly be done.
And for everybody's information, that's a line item of roughly? Somewhere in the million range.
About eight hundred thousand dollars?
Okay, eight hundred thousand, okay.
I don't think we're going to find out a lot until they're able to find out what Cassetti meets.
This is true. Okay. Thank you for that information.
Is that how it's pronounced?
Did you like it?
That was pretty good.
Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Nolish on items one through fourteen?
Okay, if not, I'd like to move that items one through fourteen, under Finance, be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second. Thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of informational items. We have a revenue summary for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, as of April, and a summary of revenue and expenditures for two thousand sixteen, seventeen, as of April.
Thank you, Dr. Nolish. We can now move on to Support Services, and that would be Mrs. Spade.
Okay, under Support Services, we have three items. Number one, lunch, breakfast, and morning daycare prices will stay the same. Third year contract for custodial chemical supplies, one-year contract for general floor care custodial supplies. I move that items one through three, under Support Services, be added to the legislative meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, prior to closing the meeting, I would ask, is anybody from our standing room, any crowd here, for any additional public comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Dave, I have a question. Do you, um, do you have any idea what's going on down Seville? If they're getting ready to move in, there's a dumpster down there, and they seem to be, somebody's throwing stuff away. Is that us, or is that them?
We're clearing stuff out right now. We finished our auction. So we're getting rid of anything that is left on the upper floors that we're not keeping. We've got to clear it out for them.
So they're still intending on being there September opening?
Well, they finally, just today, got the, the sales agreement and purchase agreement back to us. So we can now file at the, at the court to get court approval. That's the biggest time eater right now. Other than that, yes, they do, they do intend to complete the purchase and be in there.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great question. I was, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I was just, just getting at that. I was just wondering myself, but I just forgot to ask the question. Good.
They are working on a very sizable volunteer program.
They, they have one?
For cleanup down there.
I'm on it.
Are you?
No, I'm not that committee.
Did they find any, did they find individuals that broke into the school?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Dave, how long you anticipate the court approval will take?
Just depends on how long it takes to get on the docket, and that's up to the judge. And the court process itself is fairly quick. We've gone through several of them. But you got to get on the docket.
Thank you.
Thank you.